Thank you, Annie.
Excuse me.
So, good evening. Is there anybody in the audience, Jim? Just so I'm aware. Not as of right now on Zoom? Doesn't look like it.
There's nobody waiting?
Perfect.
Ms. White's here.
So, the Newton Planning Board would call, would like to call a public meeting to order at 5:00 past 7:00 on October 11, 2022. Mr. Lavoy is absent tonight. Ms. White is online via Zoom. Ms. Routen is also unavailable tonight. First on the agenda, I would like to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is acceptance of the minutes from September 27, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Second?
It's already second.
Mr. Guide beat you.
Yes, Dan beat you.
I didn't hear him.
Jim, when you're ready.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Next on the agenda is approval, approval of the NEPA manifest. Since Jim issued the agenda the other day, he received a couple of additional bills from north of Boston media, roughly just shy of $100. So, it went from $50 to $149.23.
So moved.
Second?
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
So I just have, since Mr. Donovan brought up that one comment about the planning board. Jim, the agenda you sent out had, I actually commented on it when I looked at it. I guess I'm confused of where that information's posted. I just want to make sure we're okay. So I'm just gonna look.
See it on the website. Under the agendas.
Okay.
It's the 11th. And then the agenda we have in front of us is the one that's there.
With the exception of the correction of the NEPA, NEPA manifest number? Actually, that may be, that's only on my script.
Copy, yeah.
So I'm not quite sure where they're looking.
Yeah.
Not that I want to mislead.
Oh, on TV?
No. This is the planning board meeting.
Right.
Oh, okay, so that's...
The planning board asked me to invite him because on the, at the previous meeting, there were plans that were not taken jurisdiction of because they were not in...
That's, that's not...
Yeah, so I guess whatever they're showing on TV may not be live. I have no idea what's on public cable right now. So from a formality or legal standpoint, I don't believe we're obligated to broadcast this live, correct?
No.
So...
I think it's put out afterwards.
The, the, this is going, it goes live and then it goes on YouTube usually the following day.
It's going to public cable right now?
Right.
So that's, the title is wrong. It's saying it's a ZBA meeting.
Oh, okay.
Although I, now I understand your, your comment, Bob, or the viewer's comment. I'm not sure if they're watching us. Okay.
I will go speak to Kevin.
So that's on the back end and I apologize to the viewer online. Thank you for that.
Thanks.
I wasn't sure if they were broadcasting a previous ZBA meeting from the 5th or the title was just incorrect. So whoever is on television watching it, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Perfect. Thank you. Okay, so we've gone through minutes from the 27th of September, the NEPA manifest. And then we asked Mr. Donovan, who is now the building inspector for, I don't want to speak for you, five months, somewhere around there, eight months. Maybe I totally underestimated. Okay, about a year, to come speak to the planning board so we have a better understanding of your role of, so when the planning board grants an approval or denial or an approval with certain conditions or when we receive comments from the public of anything, it could be from, is this sign too big, somebody has too much trash in their yard, somebody's building we approved 500 square feet, this building's 10,000 square feet. How we field and address those comments as well as other issues if we, very similar to building size, if we approve two buildings, three buildings, and they put 10 buildings. Some of this I'm grossly exaggerating for the ease of conversation. Or plantings, if we, if the approval that, or the plan that came up in front of the planning board included landscape plantings and then the plantings were not installed, how do we move forward? I think, did I generally summarize that for the board? Do we have?
In use.
Forward in?
Use.
In use.
Use of the property, what they say they're using it for, right?
Uh, yes, so the use of property. If it's a, that's a good point. So if it's a residential, zoned residential, they have approval for a home and they are manufacturing trinkets.
Widgets.
Widgets, thank you. How do we do that? And, you know, a lot of these have come forward with home-based businesses. We receive a lot, they're not explicitly from code enforcement. A lot of them come from the home-based businesses need to go register for a home-based business address. They go downstairs, they come up to us and then they get here. But you also field complaints occasionally from abutters, home-based businesses, I'm assuming. So that's generally our questions and it's not only for the planning board but for the public.
Okay. One of them is when you, when you guys approve a home-based business, the fire department and myself is code enforcement, building inspector. We go down, we inspect the property and we, we are supposed to sign off saying what business they're running in that residence is safe to what we allow them to do in there. If they don't, then we have to try and work with them to come into compliance. Commercial, somebody's gonna do plantings, they don't do all the plantings, whatever it is. We work with them, we keep pushing to try and get the plantings installed, which takes a while. And I know one of the ones we're talking about, it's been going on for 15 or so years, so I kind of get on it, on the end of it. But I am working with commercial and residential people to try and get up the code. You know, hopefully we don't have to go to court on it, but if it comes to it, that's what we're gonna have to do.
Okay, so that is, your teeth are skin in the game is you eventually have to bring these people in front of a higher power to financially motivate them?
Correct. If we cannot get them to comply with the zoning and the codes, next step is we do have to end up going to court, which costs everybody money. That's why I try not to do that.
That makes sense. And as, maybe you can help out with this, Jim. We do not have in our regulations, is there a financial fine that a applicant or, that's not under the planning board's jurisdiction? So we can only approve a project with conditions and then we never see it again?
Uh, no, you can actually void a approval.
And then it goes back on his plate and we're just...
No, actually that means you have to go to court because only a judge can expunge a recorded plan.
Okay.
Right, on my end, there is no, I can't implement any fees until I go to court and the court can implement the fees for us. I can't do it on my own.
As Jen said, that's kind of an extreme response for us to do that. And it would, it's better to work with our code enforcement officer and see if we can't just kind of get cooperation for the town, for the town's sake. Is there any way that we can help? It's really up to you, isn't it, once?
Once it's been approved and the project starts or the home business wants to open, it's basically on the fire department and code enforcement.
And would something like, obviously we can't change the past. Larger projects or certain projects, depending on what the conditions are of approval, and I'll speak on my opinion, like a home-based business that's small, that is, like, one of the conditions is a previous project we just approved. They shall not do commercial or, they can't, cannot work on vehicles at their residence that they're not, or that they're being paid for, like no commercial business at their home, that was a condition. We obviously can't bond that, but where there's a construction project or there's plantings or erosion control or number of parking stalls, is it easier for us to bond the project and then release, I'll say a $100,000 bond and have certain milestones? When the sub-bas is down, you can release 50%. When the pavement's down, you can release another 25. When the buildings are up, it's up to 90. When the site is deemed 100% complete, then that bond can be released in full so that, for, not necessarily occupancy permits, but for, so you're not trying to track down conditional approvals indefinitely, or conditions of the approval, not conditional approval, sorry. Conditions of the approval indefinitely with basically, other than you emailing or showing up and making phone calls of, hey, you still haven't done this one thing, it's still outstanding, and then we carry it on for five, 10, 15 years. Is that an easier mechanism? At least there's a financial mechanism associated with it.
Right, that would be on your end, doing the bond, which that would work out great because then we do have something to go back on instead of trying to spend more money going to court to fight everybody. It doesn't come into compliance. So that could be a financial hold on them that would help. But like I said, once the planning board approves everything, they get their permits, they start doing their building, if they're not following what you guys implemented or okayed for them to do, then it becomes code enforcement's problem. Really, we have nothing to do except keep bugging them until they come into compliance or we end up taking them to court. Fire department, their life safety, so if they don't do their life safety, the fire department won't sign off on their permits, which also means they can't get their CO.
Are there any limitations? I assume there are, but are there limitations and if so, what are they for us to put into effect a bond requirement as a part of an approval?
So I think we already have the regs in the books to allow us to place the bond. And I, this is, this is a great question for Jen, but my understanding is typically they cannot be more than the value of that item. So if you're building a parking lot and it's 100 grand, you can't ask for a bond for 150 because there's no reason to ask for a bond. And potentially some of the reason, or one of the reasons why we could request a bond is so if that item is not complete per the conditions, the town can then go in and complete that item.
Okay, this is...
I would have to really get guidance from the circuit rider or somebody above me on exactly what.
I'd really like us to because I know that one of the things has been people being in fire code compliance. And that's a condition of our approval that they, that they have it, but the enforcement can be difficult and maybe having a bond underscores the importance of those conditions for the applicant and would help them as well as the town to, and the neighbors and abutters to, you know, to have, to have the conditions met. So I'd really like to have, have the circuit rider weigh in and help us with that.
Mr. Chair, this is Barbara.
Yes, Barbara.
A lot of times during a project, usually it's a larger project and not necessarily a residential one of any kind of value that we can always ask the town engineer to suggest a right amount of, for bonding, for cash bond. He's usually the one that does that for us.
Yeah, they do a surety review for the, on behalf of the town for, and they'll ask for line items for major milestones, thank you, Dan. So I, I would agree with you, Annie. We need to get some guidance from the circuit rider of what those, you know, obviously we don't want to make it unreasonable.
No.
Just to protect
Something.
Something so that Mr. Donovan or whoever replaces you in the future isn't picking up, like, going back forever and saying, these nine items weren't complete, please do them. And we have, it's out of our, the planning board's hands. You have very little negoti, or anything to negotiate on because there's just an approval. And you don't want to negatively impact somebody that's been carrying on their operation for years over some conditions that, you know, were never met years and years ago. And it's almost to the point where, although it's a condition of the approval and it should be adhered to, it's been so long since that approval's been made that it's very hard to get the momentum moving again.
Mr.?
Mr. Chair, this is Bar, this is Barbara again. I know a lot of times when we set conditions, we usually have, that they have six months to, to comply with the conditions. Maybe what the board needs to do and maybe ask Jen, because I'm not sure if we can do this, maybe for the fire chief, for, for the alarm system or codes or, or whatever, maybe that part can be lowered to 30 days, that they have to do that within 30 days.
I guess I'm open, I would, if we were reducing it to 30 days, I would probably look to the code enforcer in the fire to make sure that's a reasonable time for them and applicant to get information in front of you, you to get over there to make sure it's okay, but...
It'll be, it'll all depend on what the building is and the situation and the length of the building to be built. If you give somebody 60, 90 days for a building, but you want the fire alarm system done in 30, it may be hanging in the air because there's no building to attach it to. So you gotta go with, the fire alarm system is checked when the rough wiring's done and then it's checked at the end for the CO, make sure it's all working, everything's speaking to each other and the alarm's working.
So that could be a year.
Right, that's at the very end. The fire alarm system.
Yeah, I, I guess it's case by case, Barbara. So like a home-based business, I mean, most of the times the fire alarm system is, smoke detector is pretty straightforward. A commercial building, you have, I don't know, SCADA or something.
I was speaking more of the residential, yeah.
Sprinklers, it's much harder for you guys. You know, 30 days isn't reasonable or practical.
The building has to be there for them to put the, you know, the smoke systems in, sprinklers and whatever else has to be put in.
I was just gonna say, prior to COVID, which changed a lot of things, we, the planning board traditionally always started off with a restoration bond for large projects. That was the, the cost of restoring the land if they messed up and stopped. About a quarter of the way through the project, that went from being a restoration bond to being a completion bond. At the same time, there were also paving bonds, landscaping bonds, and road bonds.
What was the last one?
They were paving bonds, landscaping bonds, and road bonds.
Road.
Road bonds covered the town roads that could be affected. Paving bonds and landscaping bonds were for onsite improvements. For some reason, those bonds were allowed to expire without the board knowing it.
Is it expire as in the?
The, the board stopped accepting letters of credit.
Okay.
Letters of, of credit have an expiration date. If the board wants to, the board could go back to the cash on deposit. They hand it a check, the treasurer puts that into an individual savings account. Money is released from the bond and when the bond is fully released, they get back all of the interest that is accrued. That, that is your best way of having some sort of teeth to go with the right, with the requirements. And those can be, I mean, we're holding, I believe the treasurer is still holding a bond on houses, house lots, on Thornell Road that have a shared driveway.
Yes.
That they were required to put, they were required to bond and do landscaping, and I believe it was a three-year. Those should be coming up for expiration.
So that was before everybody's time but Annie.
But I remember, I remember that hearing, I remember that approval, that was before I was on the board, but I do remember that. And we really haven't used a bond since then, and that was because it was a scenic street that was a requirement, but that seems to be something that could become more of a norm for us. I'd really like to hear from the circuit rider about that.
Prior, prior to COVID, it was the norm. I'm not certain why it sort of fell by the wayside, but part of, part of the problem was when you accept letters of credit to back up a, a bond, you're kind of, if, if the person allows it to lapse, you don't have any teeth, whereas if you're holding a passbook, it's a case of you get your money back when
That, the town engineer.
When the board has evidence that you have completed the work.
And usually we would recommend, the recommendation would come from the town engineer or somebody else to say, yes, this milestone was met, planning board approves the release of the bond, the applicant gets their money plus interest back. Code enforcement doesn't have an issue because we released the bond. The item was taken, the condition was taken care of because the applicant wants their money back.
Right, if you guys have a bond, say on landscaping, and they're not doing it, then us as a town, we could tell them, you know, this is supposed to have been done by this date. We're gonna give you another 30 days. If it's not done, we're gonna take the bond money to do what you were supposed to do.
And actually do it.
And actually do it.
I like it.
I was just gonna say, in 20 years, I think, once was money taken out of a bond to pay for something.
Because it works.
Yeah, it works.
Right, it only happens once to somebody and they're usually not gonna do it again.
Well, I can tell you, my term began prior to COVID and that has never been in effect during the time I've been on here. So I don't know when it went by the wayside, but it wasn't COVID.
No, no, I'm, I'm just saying that, that was the...
That's the date you patted your head, yeah.
Well, I remember a couple of years prior to COVID, us doing bonds. And then when I took over in here, I discovered that all the bonds had expired and had expired at least six months prior to my taking over, so and the board never knew that they expired.
Okay. Thank you.
So I think it would be helpful, larger projects, and I'm not saying, obviously we need more guidance from Ms. Routen, but for larger projects or projects that have conditions that in our opinion is necessary and the town engineer's opinion should be a requirement to bond, we can go forward that way, so we're not, you have something to stand on or at least if an item is not being completed, the town has something to go forward with.
Mr. Chair, I suggest that we not only explore that, but then also put it into our policies and procedures so that we standardize it, so that we know and the applicant knows way ahead of time and it's public record what the policy is for that.
Yeah, I would, I'm not very familiar with our current regs, maybe it's clear in there.
I don't think so.
Actually, they are listed in...
Isn't it in the major site plan?
The procedures manual.
So we can take a look?
We'll take a look at it and then move forward.
I can, I can let you know by Thursday where the, where they are.
That works.
Thank you.
Does anybody, by the way, thank you for coming.
Oh, not a problem. I just wanted to do clear one thing though, when I talked about inspections and fire department. Fire department and code enforcement work in the same codes. But the fire department, because I'm not on the fire department, I'm just speaking to the best of my knowledge for them. It's not written in stone because they have their own policies, their own procedures, their own codes and their own inspections. So whatever I say about the fire department, it's to the best of my knowledge.
That makes sense.
Thank you.
Does anybody?
Was that, is there anything else that would help you?
If we have something that we can fall back on, like the bond, that would be the best thing that could happen to the town.
Okay.
Because then if they don't do it, we can use their bond money. Instead of using town money to get, go to court with lawyers and everything else to make them, have them comply.
And then we're all debt money.
Right, we're just gonna lose more money, but if we have the bond, they're gonna lose money, we're not gonna lose anything.
Right.
The town's gonna lose less money, I mean...
Right, because then we don't have to pay the court fees, lawyers.
Right.
It'd just be a lot easier for, on everybody.
And probably everybody would just soon avoid that.
Right, if you're holding a $100,000 bond for a $100,000 drive, parking lot, why not do it? You're gonna pay the $100,000 either way. So you might as well do it and stay in good graces with the town for your next project.
Right.
And that, I think that's all we're trying to do is just make sure that what gets approved is generally what's built. And, you know, we, we don't have people coming in front of us that they get approval for this and they build that and then somebody else comes in front of us for approval for something else and then they go build something else and then they point, well, they did this instead. So we just want to make sure.
And if they do build it to code and then they sell it to somebody else, then it changes views and then we basically start all over again if they don't follow procedures and...
Exactly. So we're just trying to make it very standard, very clear, very transparent and try to take some of the potential questions out of it.
Mr. Moran, please, please accept my gratitude for your coming up with this, with this conversation. Really, I mean, you brought the conversation here today, so thank you.
I, I don't want to take credit for that and I think, wait, I think it was Ms. White that, was it you, Barbara, that mentioned? Would it be good to have Jim, Mr. Donovan here? I can't remember.
I don't think it was me, but I, I agree because we all need to work together.
It was you? Oh, it was Mr. Guide, look at that.
Was it? It was Dan? Dan, thank you so much. Thank you.
I just, we had some people here, it was, I think it was our first meeting and everybody was asking, well, what if they don't? What if they don't? And alls we could say is code enforcement, code enforcement, and it was like, and I had never met you, right? I mean, so that's all we could say and now at least we have a little bit more background on it, but that's all you could say is every time, I mean, we had a room full of people and every, well, what if they do this? And we're like, code enforcement, and they did not like the answer and that's all we could say, you know?
Unfortunately, I, I don't think this conversation's gonna change the outcome of that meeting, but...
No, no, that meeting was different, but now we all have a better understanding, right? I mean, and that, which was the point of...
Right, but then your next meeting, it's gonna be the same answer. If they don't do it...
It is with a little bit more explanation, other than just saying code enforcement, you know what I mean? you know what I mean? But.
I'll put together a package of what we have on bonding and what the state law is.
That would be helpful, yeah.
Great.
That would be great. And then we can have Jen's input as well next time.
For sure.
Move forward.
Sure.
But, yeah, that, we've also, just so you're aware, if we approve a home-based business and they want that their business is baking cakes, and they want to sell five cakes a day, and they're selling 100, people are like, well, what's going to happen? There's going to be too much traffic.
We literally would say code enforcement.
You have to call you to then say, you're not allowed to sell this many cakes, or come back in front of the planning board to get approval to sell 100 cakes a day.
Right. I've done that with multiple people in town. I've been called for somebody running a garage, out of his personal garage, went down, talked to him, never had a problem with him, he agreed, he shut it down, finished up the last truck he had in his garage, came to talk to Jim about getting a in-home business.
Yeah.
Most people are very agreeable, and most of them just don't know.
Right.
But once they know, I haven't had one argument or discussion with anybody about getting anything taken care of so far. It's been almost a year.
I think we're usually pretty reasonable.
As long as you're willing to work with the people, usually, they're fine. Again, most of them just don't know.
Yep. So that's, that's what we find, you know, unfortunately, we have to send some stuff your way because most people, you know, don't understand, they, they haven't had to deal with it before, so they don't understand what our role is, what your role is. So this was helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
I don't have anything else. Do we have anything else on Zoom? Doesn't look like anybody has their hands up. Ms. White, anything?
No, I'm good. Appreciate Bob coming tonight to talk to us. Thank you.
No problem. Anytime you need me to come in, just call me. I'm five minutes down the street.
Thank you.
Yeah. And if you can think of anything else, please reach out to the planning board, let us know, and we can have a discussion about it.
And, sorry, when things don't happen and it goes above your head, you then go to the Board of Selectmen. I'm just kind of closing this for Luke. Is that the next step?
I go, I can't talk to the board to see if they want to pursue it in court.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just closing the loop for everybody.
We haven't got to that spot yet in almost a year, so I'm hoping we don't ever have to, but eventually, it's going to happen.
So, okay. Thank you.
Okay. All set.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you very much.
What we came up with the idea of a bond review is?
There you go.
I'll increase you from zero to zero.
From zero to zero plus, right?
Okay, so we are now moving on, and since Mark is not here, update on the CIP. It's all you.
Okay.
Before you do that, can I just check, because there's a Paul that, that came in during the last discussion, and I just want to find out if it's Mr. Zlot, so that I can.
Yes, it is. I'm terribly sorry, I haven't really had time getting in.
That's okay. I just want to get you as being here.
I don't know what happened tonight, but I had a really tough time being into the meeting. I apologize for being late.
Do you just want to get out of speaking?
What?
Thank you.
Do we want to appoint Paul?
Is it voting?
You can if you wish.
I'm not, are we voting on anything?
There's nothing, I don't believe there's anything else to vote on.
I was going to say, there's nothing else to vote on, but.
I'm wicked sorry, sorry.
That's okay. I just want to make sure that he gets credit for.
For being here.
For being here.
Thank you. So on the CIP, a letter has been sent from Mark and me as part of the steering committee, and Mr. Piper also knows about a meeting which tentatively is being scheduled for the 20th at 9:00 a.m. with the town administrator to follow up on completion of some of the CIP items. It's about two-thirds done, but there's about a third that's kind of outstanding, and one of the concerns is that some of the planning seems to be more immediate, like in the next one to two years, whereas this is a five-year capital improvement plan, so we need to have people kind of look towards longer term if they can. And the other thing is to identify clearly the potential sources, costs, and sources of funding so that the town can plan. So that's coming. Next time, hopefully, we'll have another report for you.
So this is less like an annual budget, but more of a long-term prediction. I'm, I'll just use the roads, like, agent. You're not really looking for how much salt's going to cost next year, you're looking for larger capital expenses.
Right.
Or potential operating budgets five years from now.
It isn't even operating budgets, it's capital improvement. It's a capital improvement plan, so it's things that would need to be invested in for the longer term, for more than just a year of operations.
So essentially, what we're trying to do with the capital improvement plan, and this is the way it's supposed to work, is the department heads submit items, whether they're vehicles, whether they're buildings, whether they're roads, anything that has to do with the capital part of the town, that we start to prioritize the importance of what is the immediate needs that have to be addressed so that we can, over the course of those years, as Dennis was talking about, start to put out warrants to put money aside to try to start to address these because they have gone unaddressed for so long that that is why the town is in a bit of a disarray as far as the buildings, like Mr. Mike Povero, the road agent, was talking about, about the town needing to buy vehicles, like he was talking at the selectmen's meeting the other night. Some of the other things would be what we need to get in place to bring our transfer station up to snuff because there's some things that aren't going correct. They're working on some of that right now with some of that opera money that we have coming in, which is going to help save the town and be able to address some of that. But like I said, there's some other big-ticket items that, and when I say big-ticket items, we're talking lots of money, that we can't just take right out of the budget to pay for these. So we have to plan for them over the course of, like Ms. Collier said, the next five to six years by putting them in order and start attacking them one at a time to get this town back up to snuff and get it back to the way it should be operating so that we can keep the tax, the taxes for the constituents of this town at a minimum and, and not be having that huge fluctuation because all of a sudden, we want, we, we want or we need to come up with a great deal of money to accomplish some of these things.
I think that's really great, and if I could add on to one thing is that because there's been deferred maintenance and deferred investment in the town, some of the departments potentially could say, we need all this in the next one to two years, whereas we're doing a five-year plan. So a part of doing a capital improvement plan for the town is to set them up, as you were saying, as far as a prioritizing and affordability so that we can kind of recommend a plan of action for capital improvement in the town. So that's the purpose, and next Thursday, I believe, a week from Thursday is the 20th, that's when we're going to have a meeting with the town administrator. As of now, that's to be confirmed by the administrator at this point.
Does anybody else have any comments?
Oh, just because Mr. Marshon brought up the opera money, the selectmen did approve of purchasing for the planning board office a plotter scanner.
You're kidding.
That will allow me to take all the old plan sets and scan them in, hopefully clean them up, and possibly even print fresh copies for our records. One thing that it may require is because my little tiny office may not be big enough, may flip and wreck and conservation, may move into my office and I may take over. That as being the land use office, what is now called the little conference room.
What's ARPA?
Opera is.
American Recovery.
Protection or something, or?
Yeah.
I don't really know this for.
But it's, it's COVID money, basically?
Right. It, we got.
Just, just for the public, so.
Mr. Marshon could, could help. I believe we got half a million dollars.
Yeah. So what it is, it's the American Recovery Program Act that they passed. It's actually, everybody in this town has actually paid that money. It's not free money, as it was brought up at the meeting, nothing is ever free. The government was just kind enough to give us back some of our money so that we could address some issues that came up during COVID, which a lot of people couldn't identify or had no idea of what was going to take place with something like that happened. They have opened up other avenues because there's so many needs that need to be addressed to the way that money can be spent. So we've been able to use that money, like I said, to a lot of the things that the town needs, as long as it has to do with emergency services and stuff like that, or to the town buildings.
It's American Rescue Plan Act.
Right.
Thank you.
$1.9 trillion.
Yeah. And we got about a half a million out of it.
Okay.
So, yes, and as Bob noted.
I'll just let you know, the offices can't be flipped until the ramp gets repaired.
Which is probably not being funded by Opera. I will let Ms. McCarthy figure that out.
Okay.
I don't know anybody else here that can, so she seems to be doing a very good job, so I'll let her continue.
Wonderfully.
And then Ms. Rowden's on here for the grant updates. She did not provide me any.
I gave you a copy of the email that she.
Yep.
Sent late this afternoon with her apologies. She and her family are ill. I didn't go into details. However, she suggested, and Mr. Moran, you have the copy of it, that the board review, I believe it's in front of you to the upper right. Mr. Moran?
Oh, this?
No.
You're talking about the fee schedule or the?
No, no, no. You have a copy of an email that I received today. It looks, I know I put it in front of you. Okay.
Okay, yeah, yes.
Thank you.
Specific on the public outreach, on the revisions.
That, that's the point you're at, on the land use chapter for the master plan.
So Ms. Rowden's recommendations is that we put this out for public comment, similar to the CIP and the master plan for the community. In her opinion, we will get a lot of comments on this, more than we received previously.
For the land use chapter.
For the land use.
I read it, and I, I think that she did a wonderful job on it, and it's very informative, has a lot of information of how the town's grown, where we're at, where we stand with the town. Like, one of the, in particular, it talks about in there how the town thought it had so much land, but then when they were able to access the aerial photos, that they discovered that a lot of what they thought was actual usable land became wetlands. So the usable land portion, the acreage dropped as the wetland acreage picked up. And there's a bunch of other stuff in there, dealing with the population, and it talks about, just so the townspeople know, the, because there's been the huge increase of the population that she talks about in this, the importance of having an increase of population the way this town's grown, the strain that we are now putting, like we're talking about, on our emergency services, on our town hall services, the town transfer, in general, everything that has to do with this town, and having to come up with ways to be able to pay and sustain these, the demographics that this town needs to, to be able to succeed. So if the people really take the time to read this, they will truly get a better understanding about what has taken place over the past, say, 40 years in this town, and where we're at now, and, and what we need, and what we want to address as far as what everybody filled out in that questionnaire. So I strongly suggest anybody that's out there, or anybody that watches this, and they, they have the opportunity to look at the draft for the land use, that they take the time to read it, probably about a half hour or so, and like I said, it's very informative.
And I think it's written, not like a regulation, but in a way that most of the public could easily understand it.
Yes.
So it's, it's not a very wordy document, in my opinion. It's pretty straightforward.
That's one of the things that I know we really wanted to do with the master plan is to have it be something which is a usable, readable.
Right.
User-friendly document, and, you know.
Familiar with land use regulations, you could be, regardless of, you know, what you do every day, you could pick this up and read it, and actually understand how we got where we are over time. Yes, Jim?
I was just going to say, I can put this on both the planning board homepage and the master plan homepage, and I'll speak with Diane about putting it on, a link to it on the homepage for the entire town website. I can speak to her about whether or not there is a way of putting into it a link so that people can submit comments, which I would have used, have sent to the planning board, and then I could just, you know, just take any comment that comes in from that, through that source, and put it aside and forward to the master plan steering committee.
I think if that's the easiest way, that would be great. I guess I would check with Ms. Rowden if this should go out for public comment.
Well, that's, I would check with her before I would.
I think one of the things is that the master plan steering committee has been over this, and we really haven't had a public hearing, but I think what we'd like to do is to bring it to the planning board, and for the planning board to have a public hearing on it at this point. I don't, I think it's.
Actually required to.
Pardon me?
I think we're required to.
Yeah, I think we're required to, but I think that we, for the master plan steering committee to also have a public hearing doesn't seem to me to be very useful, as useful as, as just going direct to the planning board. Do you agree with that, Jordan? Is that kind of, that's kind of where we were at?
Consolidate, yeah, why not?
What?
Consolidate, I agree.
Yeah. So if we could schedule a public hearing for the planning board, looking at what kind of applications we have coming forward and so forth, and see when we might be able to have one, as Ms. Rowden says, it might be a lot of participation, so we might be on a plan an hour or so.
So.
Oh, just to answer what I thought was a question in Ms. Collier's comment, I believe the first meeting in December, the, the next meeting in October, you've got a lot on the plate. The planning board has to talk about what they're going to do in November because you have.
The election.
The election kills the first meeting in November. The second meeting in November is Tuesday prior to Thanksgiving.
Is what?
The Tuesday prior to Thanksgiving.
Ah, okay.
So I'm trying to keep those kind of empty. However, at the moment, there is nothing scheduled for the first December meeting.
So could we plan a public hearing for that first? So could we plan a public hearing for that first meeting in December? And get the word out to residents to read it over and prepare their comments?
You do have money in the budget to cover the cost of the public hearing.
Cost of the public hearing?
It has to be, it requires a public notice.
Right.
In the newspaper. That's going to be about $100 bucks.
Okay.
If we can tie it in so that there's... I know there's at least one publicly submitted application or petition warrant article coming in, in which case the petitioners have to pay for their portion. I'm just trying to figure out how to get the biggest bang for the buck for an ad.
I think it's money well spent.
That was Paul.
Excuse me?
That was Paul?
Yes.
We can ask Ms. Roudin too, I'm sure, that we can use that potential grant money to refund that somehow. Maybe it's $100.
It's $100?
Basically, what I'm suggesting is you can set it now for the first, the second Tuesday in December. Don't firm it up until in November because it, I mean, we have to post it 10 days prior. So hopefully, some other stuff will come in and it can all be lumped in together.
So we don't really need a motion at this point to hold a public hearing. What we need to do is defer that until the next October meeting, probably, because late November would be too late to give notice. So the October 27th is set?
October 27th, yeah.
Okay, the October 27th meeting, we make a motion and decision on a public hearing date? Is what I'm hearing you say.
This is Barbara, and we'll need to check with Jen to make sure that it's okay to set that chapter out.
It was okay, it's okay to publish that on the website.
The draft, right.
Right. Though it would go on the website exactly as it is there with "draft" very boldly on it.
My guess is she's going to want to make a few minor edits to this prior, like a cover and a few other things.
Okay.
That would be my guess. I could be wrong.
I'll send her an email.
Yeah, I would double-check with her first.
Just so...
You got black and white. The one I, that she sent me is color.
Really? With pictures.
Did you want a color on, Bob?
Well, I was kind of, you know, the pictures, as I was looking at it and reading through it, I said to myself, it would be so much nicer if these pictures were in color. I'd be able to see and differentiate between some of the things.
The other, one other comment on it is that in the master plan, as a whole, all the other chapters, we did approve having them in double column, you know, in two columns.
Okay.
And a certain typeface and stuff, if it could be consistent with that, that would be preferable.
Okay.
I have none of that information. Was Ms. Roudin doing that?
The master plan?
Yeah, was she formatting the master plan chapters?
No, we did that. We brought it to the planning board. It's been approved as it is. So it's just to be consistent with what's already been approved and done for the rest of the master plan.
Oh, okay.
I'm just looking at this, and I think that's going to be hard with all the tables?
The tables, what's done with the others, with the other chapters, is that the tables are done over the two columns. And so it's, you know, the two columns and then the table and then the two columns on the next page or whatever.
Okay, I get what you're saying.
Also pictures.
I agree, they should probably look the same regardless of, either or. I have no preference.
Right.
And then once the CIP is put together and this is done, then that'll be the three key components to the new master plan for the town. So we are making progress.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else?
Was there any update on the grants?
Not here.
Yeah.
I didn't know if there was an email or anything. Okay.
I haven't seen an email.
No, that was received late this afternoon.
So that'd be good to make sure it's on the next agenda.
I believe she mentions that she would update that at the next meeting.
She does. So basically, she says if we're generally okay with this, she's going to update this.
Great.
Okay, well, I'll call the meeting at 7:58?
Just one thing, please decide what you want to do with November. Are people willing to commit to coming on the Tuesday before Thanksgiving? Because you have to hold at least one meeting per month.
Or, or do we want to have a meeting because the election is November 8th, which would be our first meeting, if we decide to have a meeting another day in that week? We could do that also.
That is also a possibility. However, if you're going to do that, I need to know now so I can get... The earlier people know...
The better.
Exactly.
How is our, how, what's our status of applications and business?
There is... There are two continuances still ongoing.
For the 27th of October.
For the 27th.
Right.
I suspect those may be continued further. I have a lot line adjustment.
Wait, 25th of October.
27th.
Excuse me?
7th.
No, 27th is a Thursday.
Yeah.
Oh.
Sorry, 25th.
25th.
25th. There's a lot line adjustment coming in that'll also be at that meeting.
Okay.
I have not been scheduling anything for November until I know what the will of the board is.
Have you had people come in?
I'm working with several applicants at the moment that I'm trying to push off to the first December meeting because two days before Thanksgiving, we could either have a full contingent or I could be sitting here going, excuse me, did anybody get their board packet? Why don't you just do one on the 15th?
I'm general, the 15th of November, which is after elections but before the week of Thanksgiving.
Okay, so the 15th, you have a selectman's meeting. Does the selectman meet the first and the third Tuesday?
Okay.
That's why it would have to be another day during that, possibly during that week. The zoning board meets, what day is, Jim?
Excuse me?
The zoning board?
The ZVA is the first Wednesday.
Of the month.
Right.
So the second.
And then it's the selectman, like I said, the first and third, and then...
Recreation is, I believe, the second Monday.
Right.
And conservation, I believe, is going back to Thursday.
Is it Thursday?
That's, I was informed that they were considering it. I haven't had any confirmation yet.
Okay.
So it's sounding like maybe the second Wednesday could be a good date in November. The 9th, would that be?
That would be the 9th.
Yeah, the 9th, the day after election.
Sounds to me like we should meet then.
That also works for me. It's fine.
I can do the 9th.
So can I?
I have a conflicting meeting that night.
So we got four so far.
Jordan's good. How about Dan?
Yeah, I'm good. Who was that that said they have a conflicting meeting?
Paul.
That was Paul.
Oh, sorry.
So we're good. So November 9th it is, Mr. Chair?
That works for me.
Great.
Do we need to formally vote on that?
I'll get that out on the website.
Very good.
And are we thinking that might possibly be no meeting the Tuesday prior to Thanksgiving? Two days before Thanksgiving? I can tell you, I will not be available. Actually, no, I could be. I will be here.
I think that's what we're deciding, to only have one meeting in November.
Yeah.
I probably will not be available.
Stick with the one meeting in November and then go from there. Is, I'm just looking for consensus.
The 9th of November.
Okay, it's just going to be the one meeting in November.
Okay.
Thank you. Now I know what I can...
If you want to book the room now, that way we can...
I will let Diane know on Thursday. No, I just, when I'm working with potential applicants, I don't like looking at them going, eh, we may get to it in November, we may get to it in December. That just, that's not the way I like to look at people.
Yeah, let's schedule the 9th. That way it's early in November. And if, for whatever reason, you get a slew of applications and we need to figure something else out before then...
I will tell you, these are primarily home-based, non-retail businesses.
Okay, because there's always the 29th of November, which is after Thanksgiving.
That is up to the board. If you want to do one on the 9th and one on the 29th, that is...
Let's hold the 9th definitely for now. And if you get 10 home-based businesses and people need to...
Yeah, it's not going to be anything near that dramatic.
You never know.
All right.
So that way we can make a decision on the 9th if we need to have another meeting in November.
Sounds good.
Okay, so now I'll reclose the meeting at 5:00 past 8.
Thank you.
Thank you.